Indian Taco.
Raspberry tea.
Pepsi.
Better be quiet, I'm making Lloyd hungry after three.
That's a long five minutes.
Recording in progress.
Tyler? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes, I'm here, what is it?
We're voting.
Oh, I didn't hear the vote, so.
Wendell Youngman? Wendell Young?
Don't think any of us heard the motion on here.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear the motion either.
Okay, the motion was to occur. The. And that authorizes the submission of the waiver request to HUD. By the Ogallodota Housing to apply the fair market value, uh rent values.
I'm a no.
Well. Wendell Youngman Junior? Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross? Hello Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Yes. Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Puyer?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior?
Yes.
Garkil Still? Craig Dunwin?
Yes.
Uh Council most passes thirteen yes one no and three not voting, thank you council. Uh the next item? I think it was. Okay, is it Army Corps of Engineers, um, does somebody want to read that resolution?
Jen- Jennifer Hughes is gonna read there are some changes to.
Okay.
I might be if everyone did, you have a copy though.
Okay.
But uh we don't ask that Jennifer. Read the resolutions in case there are any. Um other. Change that she needed to correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh Jennifer, do you want to read that resolution?
Mister President and Chairman Carlo, I um, I unfortunately missed a little bit of that, so is it the resolution? On the um.
Uh DAPL.
The cooperating agency?
Yep, that's right.
I will. Read that. Resolution of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe. Excuse me, resolution of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe. To withdraw from being a cooperating agency for the environmental impact statement for the Dakota Access Pipeline Project. Whereas the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteen nineteen thirty-five. In accordance with the section, with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four. Point five USC, section fifty-one twenty-three. And under article three of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe Constitution. The Ogallodah Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitution and bylaws of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe, the Ogallodah Sioux Tribal Council. Exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances and whereas. Sorry. Whereas article four, section one F, one K, one M, one W empower the tribal council. To manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe. Adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare welfare of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Oshetti Secolin in Perin Sioux Nation is comprised of the following seven divisions. Middlewakaton, Sisseton, Wapakuta, Wapitan. Yankton, Yankton A and Teton. Sioux Nation versus United States, twenty-four Indian Claims Commission, one forty-seven. One sixty-two nineteen seventy. And the Teton Division of the Oshetti Secolin is comprised of the following seven distinct sovereign bands, Blackfeet. Brule, Humpapa, Miniconju. Nobos, Ogallala and Two Kettles. And whereas the Ogallodah Sioux Band was a signatory party to the Treaty of September seventeen eighteen fifty-one. In Perin eleven stat seven forty-nine. Which described in article five that the territory of the Teton and Yankton Divisions of the Oshetti Secolin is as follows. Article five, the aforesaid Indian nations do hereby recognize and acknowledge the following tracks country. Including within the meets and boundaries herein after designated as their respective territories. This, the territory of the Sioux or Dakota Nation commencing the mouth of that white earth river. On the Missouri River, thence in a southwesterly direction to the forks of the Platte River. Thence up the north fork of the Platte River to a point known as the Red View. Or where the road leaves the river, thence along the range of mountains known as the Black Hills. To the headwaters of Hart River, thence down Hart River to its mouth. And thence down the Missouri River to the place of the beginning. To the place of beginning. It is however understood that in making this recognition and acknowledgement, the aforesaid Indian nations do not. Hereby abandon or prejudice any rights or claims they may have to other lands. And further that they do not surrender the privilege of hunting, fishing or passing over. Any of the tracks of country heretofore described. Whereas the Indian Claims Commission judicially established the Aboriginal title territory. Described in article five of the eighteen fifty-one treaty as the territory of the Teton and Yankton Sioux, see. Sioux Tribe. Versus United States, fifteen Indian Claims Commission, five seven seven, nineteen sixty-five. Eighteen fifty-one treaty recognized title in the Sioux or Dakota Nation to approximately sixty million acres. Of the territory situated west of the Missouri River. In what is now the states of North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, Wyoming and Montana. Sioux Nation versus United States, twenty-four Indian Claims Commission, one forty-seven nineteen seventy. To quote Sioux or Dakota Nation unquote. With which the United States negotiated at Fort Laramie. And in which title was recognized by the Treaty of September seventeen. Eighteen fifty-one included the Teton and Yankton Divisions of the Sioux. Neither the Yankton A Division nor any of the four eastern divisions were included in the term Sioux or Dakota Nation. And whereas the Indian Claims Commission also judicially established a fourteen million acre non-treaty territory. Between the James and Missouri Rivers as the Aboriginal territory of the Teton and Yankton A Sioux. See Sioux Nation versus United States, twenty-three Indian Claims Commission nineteen seventy. The boundary of the Aboriginal title area is described at twenty-three. Indian Claims Commission at four twenty-four dash twenty-five. And whereas the Ogallodah Sioux Band is also a signatory party to the Fort Laramie Treaty of eighteen sixty-eight. Fifteen stat six thirty-five, April twenty-nine, eighteen sixty-eight. And is entitled to all the tribes' rights and the United States obligations to the tribe under that treaty. Including the affirmation of a permanent homeland for the Great Sioux Nation. Reserving to the nation without limitation rights to water, natural resources, self-governance. Self-government and all other rights necessary to make the Great Sioux Reservation a livable homeland. Whereas the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe has been the guardian of the general welfare of the people. Air, land and water of the Ogallala homeland since time immemorial. And whereas the physical, spiritual and general welfare of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe and its membership is tied deeply to the land. And its resources including the earth, water and air. And whereas the tribe has been and remains adamantly opposed to the, to the Dakota Access Pipeline. With such opposition firmly rooted in the tribe's several treaties. Respect for Mother Earth, religious, spiritual and cultural values. Lessons from the tribe's ancestors and way of life along with envi- environmental justice concerns. And whereas the Dakota Access Pipeline poses a grave threat to the tribe's rights and way of life. And therefore. The tribe has taken many actions to oppose the pipeline, including by filing suit against the Army Corps and Dakota Access LLC. And whereas the tribe was victorious in court. And that the United States District Court and Circuit Court concluded that the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Violated the National Environmental Protection Act, NEPA. By failing to prepare an environmental impact statement, EIS. Prior to granting an easement for the DAPL to cross Lake Oahu. And whereas. The United States Army Corps of Engineers Corps is preparing an EIS for the easement. That Dakota Access LLC is seeking for the Dakota Access Pipeline to cross La- Lake Oahu. And whereas the court invited the tribe to be a cooperating agency for the development of the EIS. But it only invited the tribe to be a cooperating agency on a very limited scope of issues. Despite the tribe's several and varied rights and interests in the lands, water, cultural and natural resources. And environmental justice issues, among other things that are impacted by the DAPL. And despite the fact that our tribe is a part of the Great Sioux Nation. And signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one. And therefore has a right to participate in all issues regarding the EIS as the other eighteen fifty-one treaty tribes do. And the tribe demanded that the tribe serve as. A cooperating agency on a wider scope of issues. And any other issue on which the other involved tribes are serving as cooperating agencies. But the Corps has not allowed this to be the case and has continued to limit the tribe to the narrow scope of issues for its cooperating status. And whereas the tribe cooperating agency status, excuse me. And whereas the tribe has considered its role as a cooperating agency for the DAPL EIS. And has decided that it no longer wants to serve as a cooperating agency. Be- because the tribe considers the DAPL EIS process to date to be wholly flawed. And the tribe does not want to associate itself with said process as cooperating agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe hereby withdraws the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe. From its role as a cooperating agency for the United States Army Corps of Engineers Environmental Impact Statement. For the Dakota Access Pipeline Project. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallodah Sioux Tribe hereby affirms the tribe's longstanding. And vehement opposition to the Dakota Access Pipeline Certification.
Uh motion made by Chairman Carl, second by Councilman uh. Three council people, so Councilman Rodriguez, Councilwoman Spotted Bear and Councilman Little Thunder. three councilpeople. So Councilman Rodriguez, Councilwoman Spotted Bear, and Councilman Little Thunder. And Councilman Kenoyer, Junior? Uh, further discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Uh, Secretary, you call the vote, please. Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Gerald Kenoyer, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Yes. Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Pugh?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Well, the counsel, motion passes 17 yes and 2 not voting. Thank you, counsel. Um, is there, uh, another item that we need to address? Oh, okay. Um, okay, is there a motion for that?
There's a second resolution, right?
There's another resolution, there's...
Second resolution to what?
Reject.
Reject, yeah. EIS? EIS?
Okay, um, okay, uh, councilman.
Jennifer, you want to go ahead and read that one too, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, an unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe to reject the United States Army Corps of Engineers draft environmental impact statement for the Dakota Access Pipeline Project. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution bylaws by referendum and bylaws by referendum vote on December 14, 1935, in accordance with Section 16 of the Indian Reorganization Act of 1934, 25 U.S.C., Section 5123. And under Article 3 of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is a governing body of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitution and bylaws of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article 4, Sections 1F, 1K, 1M, and 1W empower the tribal council to manage tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that is part of the Oshetli Secolin Inparin Seven Council Fires or Great Sioux Nation Enbren, and as such is a signatory to several treaties with the United States, including the treaty with Sioux and Ogallala tribes of 1825, 7 Stat 252, July 5, 1825. The Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1851, 1 Stat 740, September 17, 1851. And the Treaty of Fort Laramie of 1868, 15 Stat 635, April 29, 1868. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Band is entitled to all the tribe's rights and the United States obligations to the tribe under those treaties, including the affirmation of a permanent homeland for the Great Sioux Nation, reserving to the nation without limitation rights to water, natural resources, self-government, and all other rights necessary to make the Great Sioux Reservation a livable homeland. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe has been the guardian of the general welfare of the people, air, land, and water of the Ogallala homeland since time immemorial. And whereas the physical, spiritual, and general welfare of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and its membership is tied deeply to the land and its resources, including the earth, water, and air. And whereas the tribe has been and remains adamantly opposed to Dakota Access, to their Dakota Access Pipeline, with such opposition firmly rooted in the tribe's several treaties, respect for Mother Earth, religious, spiritual, and cultural val- values, lessons from the tribe's ancestors and way of life, along with environmental justice concerns. And whereas the Dakota Access Pipeline poses a grave threat to the tribe's rights and way of life, and therefore the tribe has taken many actions to oppose the pipeline, including by filing suit against the Army Corps and Dakota Access LLP. And whereas the tribe was victorious in court, and that the United States District Court and Circuit Court concluded that the United States Army Corps of Engineers violated the National Environmental Protection Act, NEPA, by failing to prepare an environmental impact statement, EIS, prior to the granting, prior to granting an easement for the DAPL to cross Lake Oahu. And whereas the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Corps, is preparing an EIS for the easement that Dakota Access LLC is seeking for the Dakota Access Pipeline to cross Lake Oahu. And whereas after the tribe's and its sister tribe's victory in court to require the Corps to conduct an EIS, the tribe was hopeful that the Corps would start anew and engage in a robust analysis of the DAPL's impacts on tribal rights and interests, especially in light of the Court's finding that it failed to do so previously. And whereas the Corps invited the tribe to participate in the EIS process as a, as a cooperating agency, but only on a narrow set of issues, despite the tribe's several and varied rights and interests in the lands, water, cultural and natural resources, and environmental justice issues, among other things, that are impacted by the DAPL. And whereas as a cooperating agency, the tribe received the Corps preliminary draft EIS for the DAPL project, only to find that it is wholly inadequate and flawed in analyzing the myriad impacts of the DAPL on the tribe's rights and interests and the rights and interests of the tribe's sister tribes, and neglects technical and cultural information the tribes have submitted to the Corps for consideration in developing the document. Whereas the tribe learned that the Corps selected Environmental Resource Management, in parentheses, ERM, to perform the EIS, and the ERM that actively opposed the tribes in the court case, and the tribe finds this reprehensible. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe hereby rejects the United States Army Corps of Engineers preliminary draft environmental impact statement for the Dakota Access Pipeline Project on the grounds that it is wholly inadequate in assessing the impacts on the land, the water, the fish, the wildlife, the natural resources, or cultural resources, environmental justice, and prac- and our practices and way of life. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe hereby calls on the United States Army Corps of Engineers to terminate its contract with Environmental Resources Management, which is biased and incapable of preparing a lawful and adequate EIS. And be it further resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe hereby affirms the tribe's longstanding and vehement opposition to the Dakota Access Pipeline certification.
Motion by Councilman DeBray, seconded by Councilman Rodriguez. Uh, further discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Um, Secretary, you call the vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Amy.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Gerald Kenoyer, Junior?
Amy.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Yes. Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Pugh?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior? Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion passes 17 yes, 2 not voting. Thank you, counsel. Uh, Councilman Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank Jennifer Hughes for reading those resolutions for us. I'm not used to rushing into a birthday song and, you know, all the all the octaves that I hit in there kind of, I think, there's the larynx, so I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you, uh, Councilman. Appreciate that. Um, so the next issue, uh, Council, by Councilman Little Thunder?
Yeah, uh, I didn't see the first, uh, resolution that was read, so we can get some hard copies. I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, yeah, no, Councilman, so I think it was in this packet, the land committee that was passed out. Um, I'm not sure if you have that packet, but we could get that to you. So, but that, what was in this, this one? A land packet, so. Um, so counsel, so I know that we have a couple more items left. Um, so there, I know there's HHS issue that came up with the ambulance. Uh, do we need to make a motion on that? Or is it this discussion? Uh, Councilman, you're, uh, you're vice chair.
Left me hanging. Just kidding. Um, is this the one that you, uh, asked if we wanted to see if we can extend that um, deadline to this, from six months from now, or the...
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'll entertain that motion to move the deadline to from six months from now.
That was your second, seconded by Councilman Ironclad, Councilman DeBray. Uh, to, uh, to to, uh, request a six-month extension on the appeal process with the ambulance service?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, discussion on that, counsel? Seeing, hearing none. Um, Secretary, if you could call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Gerald Kenoyer, Junior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear? Yes. Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Pugh?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, counsel, motion passed to 17 yes, 2 not voting. Thank you, counsel. Um, is there anything else that we need to? Uh, to our councilman, uh, well, clear? Okay, so there's a motion that you're, uh, second. Um, any discussion? Any else for the good of the order? Uh, thank you again, counsel, or, uh, who is that? Councilman Gilbert?
I just have a quick question, Cora.
What?
Do we have to take, um, can we move that grant conversation to the next finance meeting?
Um, can you clarify that, Councilman Gilbert?
The CDC grant for the ambulance service that was awarded.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, um, yeah, the finance, is that correct? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so she's seconded, yes, I've moved the finance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so anything else, counsel, seeing none. Um, thank you again, counsel. Appreciate all your efforts today. Um, good meeting. Thank you, secretary. Appreciate all you. Happy birthday, Jutashina, Vice President. Um, go ahead and call the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior?
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Gerald Kenoyer, Junior?
Yeah, sure.
Austin Watkins, Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross? Ella Giancarlo? George Dreamer, Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad? David Pugh? Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlos Senior? Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Uh, 17 yes, 2 not voting. Thank you, counsel. Um, Councilman Carlo, be sure to protect your voice so we read it next time. Um, thank you, everyone. Thank you, chief of the audience. Uh, thank you, Facebook people. Um, again, be safe with your mask. Be sure to get vaccinated, use sanitizer, and, uh, we'll end there. So thank you. Heads to go. And the evening meeting ends at 5:23. Thank you. Love you all.